Okay, folks, I got four blocks, so let's start the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have minutes from June 1st, 15th, and then the July 6th ones, if you get a chance to fix to go through those to approve. I have a correction on the July 6th ones. On the last bullet of the third section. It's the last bullet before section. Hang on, it's an old business. That I had made a motion to, that the decision to go ahead with the bridge festival would be pushed back two weeks to the August 17th meeting. Since the governor had pushed back the full opening of the state for two weeks. The canceling of the bridge festival would only affect the courthouse lawn as all of the sites in the county are. They meant to say public property, but it's because they're private property.
Private.
So the only ones we really have control over, actually there's a square up here.
So I put public instead of private.
You had public, so if you change it to private, that's the only question I see.
Sure.
Do you have any additions or corrections of those?
I didn't see anything else, so I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes for three meetings, June 1st, June 15th, and July 6th.
And I would second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have payroll, the amount of $170,599.73.
I make a motion, we approve payroll, the amount of $170,599.73.
And I would second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we have to acknowledge receipt of payroll, claims accounts payable report. In the amount of $128,969.55, so I'd make a motion that we acknowledge received the payroll accounts payable voucher register. In the amount of $128,969.55.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do you want us to-
It's the 20th, yeah.
Do you want us to change this before you sign it?
Minutes, yeah, I can do it, I can initial it, if that's gonna be the official copy, I can use that initial, it'll be fine. Have Bruce initial it, or do you have someone know?
It's July 6th, we'll have you initial this one.
June 15th, okay. That's June 15th. And this is June 1st. Well, I think this will work, this will be July 6th, so Bruce, I'm gonna change that public to private. And I'll initial it, and if you would too, we'll be good to go. Hi, Nick.
Sorry, I'm in line.
It's okay, I noticed. How are you today?
Thank you.
A little warm now.
Yes, it is. Okay. New business. We have some anti-checks to go with. We have seven of them. We have one to Wabash Valley asphalt for $429,958.25. That is the paving that was done as a result of the community crossings grant, that's just part of it, but that's a payment to them. And then we have a check from Park and Rec for the rental of a big bounce fun house of $2,356.50. Elevator repair and maintenance at the courthouse of $3,522.60. And then payments to North Central Park for $2,500, the school corporation. Hamilton Center, our fee to them, $3,000. And then two payments to the Park County Sheriff Department, one for $4,000 and one for $3,000. I'd make a motion that we approve the out-of-cycle checks, as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. On the agenda, we're gonna skip here just for a moment, we'll get Ken up here, but since what's her name's in our way here, we're just gonna- So how are you, Kathy?
I'm good, happy here.
How are building things in the county, much going on?
I figured it up this afternoon, since March, 1st of March, we're almost at $5 million in net.
Really?
Yes.
That's great.
April and June, or well, maybe one, April and June and this month, I'm at 1.5 today.
Wow, that's great.
For the ninth of July.
Is it mostly Amish, non-Amish, is it everybody?
It's a mix.
Good, that's good to know.
Yeah, some new homes.
Great.
You know, over 500,000.
Wow.
Yeah. It's been busy.
For those who don't know, this is Kathy Whittenmire, she's the Plan Commission Director. What can we do for you today?
I have an ordinance, I'll show you this map, with Ralph Thompson and Raccoon Lake Estates subdivision. And that's the first subdivision, when you cross the lake on the left. And he owns four lots, surrounding this cul-de-sac on Willow Drive. And he's building on this.
Good.
Planning Commission has approved it, notices went out to-
I have a question.
Everyone.
Is it Willow Drive or is it Willow Street, the ordinance is at Willow Street.
It's Willow Drive.
How do we do that?
Cross that street and drive.
On the final one, okay.
Okay. Do you wanna see this, it's four lots?
No.
Okay.
I figure you've done your job, so that's all we need to know, and I'm pretty much seeing it, so if you're good to go. But we will, on the official one to sign, we'll cross that, at the street, put drive in there, and you said that.
You might initial next door, you've done that too.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's in several places.
Oh, I see, yeah, through it, okay, I got you.
I got the Raccoon one over here, so.
So do we need to change each place, or just one place? There's only three places, it's not a big deal. Let's fix them all.
I would just change the part after reviewing this instrument.
After reviewing.
Write above your signature.
Okay. Okay.
That's where I would probably do it.
Okay.
And then initial next to it.
Okay.
Have a second spot you guys sign? That was just interested in.
Yeah, I haven't signed, we need to vote on it for a second.
Yeah.
Yeah. We actually have three spots here, so make sure it doesn't say that same day, same meeting. And, well, we only change this one two then?
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Got the same thing?
It's just, you want the active language, be it further ordained.
Okay.
That's the one, comes with this decision.
Okay, I'll put it right above it then.
Yeah, that's the one where you're taking action, so.
Okay.
That's the one I would amend.
Okay. So Bruce, any questions on this?
I have one.
Okay. We just need a motion then to-
Yeah, so, well, I'm gonna do a couple things. First of all, I make a motion that we had passed an ordinance, same day, same meeting.
I would second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Second, then I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 202011.
Okay, and I would second that, all in favor, say aye.
Which vacates that cul-de-sac, and I, aye, oh, aye, yes.
Okay. Okay.
I think that's what we gotta do, right?
I'm trying to think the last time we saw you, it's been a while.
It has been a while. She's been busy though, I can attest to that.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, we only had Kathy go first because as we're spreading out here, that was the only seat available, so she'd sit there, so. Next up on our list here, then we have Ken, Taylor from Onzeuma. Ken's a very, I mean, from Rosedale, I said Onzeuma, meant Rosedale, yeah. Ken's very active with the goings on in Rosedale, and he's got a good idea here, I think, so go right ahead, sir.
Okay. I'd like to present to you the idea of having a picnic on the courthouse lawn, specifically for the purpose, just to say, out of America. Park County is one of many thousands of rural counties that still hold the promise of the American dream and hope in this nation. We do it right, and I think it's only fitting in the times that we live in for us to celebrate that. Fourth of July kinda got messed up, people, you know, didn't do some of the things they ordinarily do, and that one's kinda been lost in the fireworks anyway. But I'd like to ask your permission to use the courthouse lawn for a really non-organized, spontaneous type of event. For people to just come, gather on this courthouse lawn, and have a picnic, and enjoy themselves. And of course, we adhere to all guidelines, it needs to be adhered to, and do the right things about it. I'd make sure we took care of any cleanup that needed to be done.
Okay.
That kind of organization would be done to help get this thing accomplished.
Do you have a date picked in mind yet, when you want to?
29th of August is a Saturday, and I believe that's the one that everybody seems to think might be open.
Okay.
For a county this size, I'm just amazed at how many events go on.
Stuff going on, yeah.
It's amazing, it's absolutely amazing.
Are you talking about over lunchtime period then, middle of the day?
Probably 12:30 to maybe 2:00, something like that.
Okay.
I have another question I have, and again, I'm opposed to the concept of, my concern will be, there won't be any, any organized, I don't know what word to describe, demonstrations of any kind, banners, anything like that, that would be offensive and disruptive to anybody.
And I personally would police that myself, I'll take care of that, and I think people will adhere to that. It'll be spelled out when we announce it, if we did appear, it'll be spelled out what this is about. It's not a protest, it's not a demonstration, it's simply a celebration of love for this nation. And I think that this doesn't, this crosses all party lines. You know, there are people on all sides of the aisle here that love this nation, and I think we're desperately in need of the time to just do that, to just love this nation. Just saw a quote from a gentleman that said, "Community is one of our deepest longings, and yet it's one of our severest challenges today." And we can work on that challenge, we can turn it around and make it something that maybe two or three years from now, we'll be sitting down saying, remember when they did all the mess? And we sat there and became great Americans, just doing the American thing at our courthouse, which is, this is the closest our government gets to us as individuals when we think about it. You know, there's an attitude in this country today that it's us against you. It really is, and it's a sad thing. And it really, our founders had it envisioned as us and you doing this together to get the things done, to make this community worth living in. And I think we can be proud of those things. The other things that are going on, and the issues and problems in this country, it's like my household, my wife is not perfect, and I certainly am not perfect, and we can-
Got that recorder going, right?
And you can say that to her, here's the big thing. But-
I understand.
Yeah, and so that's my concept, and I understand that, that was one of my concerns starting off, and I didn't wanna make it a big, big deal, simply because I didn't wanna invite those kind of people that would want to come and make a demonstration out of it.
Sure.
So my intent is to try to keep it fairly low-key, although we're gonna have to promote it somehow to get people to come out, and-
And that is the scary part, and I certainly understand exactly where you're saying, 'cause I had the same thoughts, but in today's world, there's just-
As long as I know upfront, that's not the intent, that might be a problem using the courthouse lawn now.
Yeah.
Something may happen.
May show up, you just never know, yeah. In today's world, you just don't know about that stuff.
Yeah, we can't stop that.
But we know what the intent is.
Well, I hope you have 2,000 people show up, to be honest with you, I mean, I hope, I hope that many people do what you say, love America, and wanna show that, okay? I just, we as commissioners, just make sure we don't get into a situation where something happens. Or it turns into a demonstration against something that's going on right now, irregardless of our beliefs, we all have our own separate beliefs on a lot of that stuff, but just so-
And sometimes it's more comfortable just to lay low and not even bring any attention to our courthouse or our neighborhood, so people just won't see the opportunity come and make a point out of it. But that's something that, I think, the goodness of the idea to me outweighs that fear, and I think we just have to see how that goes. It could turn out to be a wonderful thing, it could turn out to be a big mistake, but we all know.
Could be, and trust me, if something comes up, I've been a youth pastor for 30-plus years, I'm fairly skilled at getting people to stand down on things. And I'm fairly skilled at helping people understand how we can work together. So I'll make every, and that'll be my whole point of being there at the picnic, is to just make sure that we can-
Okay. Well, I'm okay with giving it a shot.
I make a motion that we allow Kindle to use the courthouse lawn, December 29th.
August 29th.
What's that?
August 29th, right.
Oh, August, I'm sorry, didn't hear that right, I thought it said December. August 29th, somewhere between 12:30 to, I know the hours may vary a little bit, but basically, use the courthouse lawn for the picnic.
And I would second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, my question is, I've always heard you, Ken, never Kindle, what's your preference?
Ken.
Okay.
Yeah, I've lived with that Kindle for, it goes from Kindle to, you know, lots of different things and spelled things, K-I-N-D-L, and so nobody ever gets it right, so we just went with my Ken.
So when you were in trouble, what'd your mom call you?
Kindle Lee.
Okay. So we know what your real name is, so we know where it's coming from.
Many times, I still hear you.
That's true, thanks, Ken, appreciate it.
Thank you, I do appreciate the opportunity to come before you and-
If he sent from us along the way, let us know.
Okay, thank you, I do appreciate it.
Okay. And we'll make sure to arrange for the restrooms to be open, that's always a special consideration, but we'll make sure we get that taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Very good, thank you very much.
All right, we already had the Plan Commission approval, Cindy Todd.
So Alice emailed you, Jen, and Bruce, and Dan as well, kinda just starting to talk about maybe rebranding this building to encompass the additional apartments. So she sent you an email that had a couple of attachments to it on some different signage, for your consideration, if you're okay with that direction. With the cost involved, so there's some that would just be more of a mini-mort type along the building, or a freestanding signage. Just talking about.
I think she sent that under her name, under Alice, if I remember.
It'll be under partnership.
It'll be under Alice Finch, is what mine is.
Okay, I thought it was, no, I didn't think it was under partnership, I thought it was under Alice or her own name, let me see if I can find it.
And I have printed one here, Jen, if you can't find it. I'm not asking you to make a decision today.
I understand.
But-
Well, I like the idea because we have added.
Start that planning process.
Yes, we have added, and we may have other things that go, so. So for those who wonder what we're talking about, the name of this building is, it's the emergency operations building, actually, but we also call it emergency management building. But on the outside, we were looking to call it the Park County Annex, or that's what's been proposed, because we have not just emergency management here now, we also have Partnership Park County in here as well.
And you've got the Little Raccoon Conservation District, and then they also suggested adding emergency medical services as well, because some of the EMS portions are here, just so that all of those departments are identified on the building or on signage in some way, is the suggestion. And Park County Annex was just a term we used, doesn't have to be that.
Sure. Let me pull them back up here real quickly.
And as we're talking about costs, you know, definitely Partnership Park County, since we seem to be the ones pushing in a lot of this change, you know, we would be happy to participate in cost percentage and things like that. We'd also like to get permission to maybe paint the two offices that we'll be moving into once they're cleared out.
The suggestions they had was one mounted on the board where it would be Park County Annex, and then the offices listed under that, the other was a freestanding sign out in front of the building, with the same thing with the annex on top, and then the offices listed below that, so we would just have to decide which way to go with that. So, yeah, let's give us a chance to look at it, and see what Dan thinks, and which one do you like of those?
Well, I like the freestanding one a little bit better, I mean, I think, obviously, rebranding the building needs to be done as well, it needs to say Park County Annex or something like that, as opposed to what it says out there now, emergency management building or whatever. But I kinda like the freestanding sign a little bit.
So we could put Park County Annex on the building itself, and then out front have what the offices listed here, 'cause that'd be easier to change, and we had to change it from time to time, yeah, I like that.
But, I'm open, you know, I'm open to everything, I'm just looking at what Alice has said, I just, I kinda like the freestanding one more so than the offices on the building itself, but-
So I would say we're probably leaning that way, but give Dan a chance to look at it, see what he intends to.
Absolutely, and she has, like I said, the pricing in there too, does not include installation, that she did add the cost for that as well. The reason why we went with that direction with those types of signs is because if things were to change, they're easy to change out without changing the whole sign.
Yes, yes.
And the freestanding one as well, I mean, it does allow for some logo and-
Mm-hmm, that's what I liked about it, yeah, that's what I liked about it.
We do too.
Okay, yeah, and the price, the price isn't crazy, we're in that $2,000, $3,000 range, folks, by the time it's done is what we're looking at, so. Yeah, let's think on that, let's give Dan a chance, and maybe next meeting we can pull the trigger on one of them and see where we go.
And if we need to get, you know, whatever direction you go, you know, work with Dawn, and whatever would be more likely to do that, and then after you talk to Dan too, if you can kinda give us some feedback too with the cost, and you know, cost sharing and how-
I just assume you paid for all of it, it'd be okay?
Well, I'm sure you would love to.
Yeah, that'd be all right, not a problem. So I don't want you standing in your way, if that's what you wanna do, that's okay, it's not a problem.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think Partnership would be willing to definitely share the majority of costs, 'cause we're kind of creating some change, but if we can pitch in some with the other various departments.
We'll talk to the council too, and see what they think about it, and come up with a plan, sounds good.
So the other piece, it's not a part of the signage, but we do have the memorandum of understanding, and relative to the move, that Partnership has looked at, I've got the okay from that board to present it, she used to, you know, care all.
Has Nick seen it, you seen it yet?
I drafted it.
Oh, so you're okay with it then, okay.
Yeah, so, in Bruce's office.
Well, there's no reason we can't do that today, is there?
No, it's just that I understand that they're gonna use the space, and it lays out the terms of the use of the space. As far as rent, or who's covering what costs and things like that, so those would be the things you'd wanna pay attention to in that.
Okay. Okay, here's what it says, it says, "Effective this date, Partnership Park County shall be allowed to occupy the open office space in the emergency management building, rent and utility free," and that's the whole idea. "Partnership will cover the expense of their own separate phone and internet service. Partnership Park County agrees to abide by any confidentiality or security measures in place as to the use of the emergency management building. That this agreement shall continue until terminated in writing by either party with 90-day notice. And any modifications or renewals of this agreement shall be made in writing and be signed by both Partnership Park County and the Board of Commissioners." I don't see anything there that's a challenge to me. The important part, obviously, is cover that the confidentiality and the security measures, and that would be Chris to make sure that everything's okay, the room is good to be used on a certain day, a certain time. Chris, you okay with all that stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'd make a motion that we sign the MOU with Partnership Park County covering their moving into this space.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'm the only one to sign it here, Bruce, so that's okay.
We'll have Derek sign it, he was in our meeting on the phone, but-
Laura won't be able to attest it till he gets, so you just bring it back to her when you get it done, and- Do you have one you want us to use, or this copy okay to you?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I do have it, though. Don't worry, I do.
Do you need a blank one, Laura, just to have it?
Um, yeah, till we get the original back, it'd be great.
And you have the one taken there right here.
And as far as the fill-in blank, the effective date, we're working with Chris to figure out what timing works.
Gotta work.
None of it works good, it works best.
Okay.
While we have Cindy here, I got a couple things too, that she's involved in.
Okay.
And you may be aware, this, Okra has a grant out that is a business recovery Phase II grant for recovery as to low to moderate income employees and residents. And what this is, is a resolution giving permission, or permission for redevelopment, or for Partnership Park County to apply for the grant. It'd be applied for by the county, but it's a grant that would help with low to moderate income individuals in the county, and job retention in the county.
Any matching obligations?
No.
It's the same one we've talked about, Jim.
Okay.
So this is a resolution authorizing that, the first one is, the second one is a certificate of exemption to be signed along with that, what was that in regards to against?
That is, so as Okra's grant application process, there's lots of pieces to it, the one that Nick's just referring to is through environmental assessment, that this particular program does not require any environmental review, so it has an exemption status.
Okay.
And so that would just be a signature on the first and second page by Jim, if you guys are okay with that. And the third one is a signature page readiness to proceed certification as to the project, and that requires a signature by Jim as the chief elected official also, just another thing required by Okra. I've signed as legal counsel, review the document.
Of the project, me by this project, seeking the grant, okay.
Just applying for the grant, it's funding, what was it, up to $250,000 that could be used in Park County to help with low to moderate income businesses or employees.
How's that determination made of the low to moderate business?
It's hard to find.
So we just submit to them, the applicants, and they decide if they meet qualifications?
No, what will be required in this next step, is we've had a local group of people working on this, kinda helping put the program together, the application together. And as part of the application, when a business applies, they have to survey their employees. And it has income ranges, the employee has to self-identify where they fall, if the business has at least 51% of their employees, that means kind of below-
So it's not the business itself, it's their employees at the 51%?
The business applies for, that it has to be-
I got you, oh. That wasn't the way, that's what I was trying to say, how would a business decide if it's low to moderate income, you're talking about the happy employees, ah, okay.
So if the business says, "I can't continue to meet payroll, pay my rent, and do this."
It's gonna affect those people, then they might help with it then.
This money will help me do this and keep my employees, so that's how it works. So these are, again, documents in that process that over requires us to have signed off on by the applicant.
Larry, will you pull me off a glass of water, I gotta check, I don't wanna start hacking. Okay.
The next thing I'll be working on is something, creating that committee for review purposes, so I don't have that for you today. These were in order to be able to-
Oh, I think it's great, I'm sure a lot of central businesses have fallen into that sort of situation a lot before.
Well, and it's county-wide too, so we're not just, to just one town or one city.
Right, I like it.
And we did get $2,000, matching money from the community foundation to apply to this, there was no match required, that they were willing to pitch in.
Good.
So that leaves us with a possible revolving loan pool of $252,000 to approve.
That'd be great.
And the committee that has been working on this, Nick is involved, we have Main Street Organization, Chamber, Financial Institution, myself.
But it's not a grant, it's a revolving loan.
So revolving loan, interest rate of 2% or less.
Okay. Okay.
And each applicant can apply for what, up to $25,000?
Up to $25,000, and Oprah has allowed us to on the loan itself that you can defer the first six months of payments as the business to get, you know, things rolling. And then if you make good on making your payments and retaining.
The employees.
The number of jobs that you said you were going to retain for at least three months, the remainder of that loan can be forgiven as a grant.
Good, I like it.
Wasn't 18 months that you had to make payments?
Yeah, but the first six are deferred, so really you're making a.
Usually, yeah.
And then you can't forgive us, yeah. So I mean, it's, you know, it's a business that needs income, that could be a good source of it. And that interest rate's lower than anywhere else, so.
Good, Bruce, any questions on it?
Yep, I've got it here, I think I'm going to make a motion that we approve Resolution 202011, which authorizes Partnership Park County to apply for this Oprah grant and also for Jim to sign the necessary pages that go along with that application.
I'd second that, all in favor, say aye. Aye, okay.
Three sheets there, did you guys?
Laura won't be able to attest this today, she had Lisa, we need to get that to her also if she's here. Okay, Chris.
Good afternoon, there are two grants that we apply, I'd like to apply for. First is the Emergency Management Program Performance Grant. This is a standard grant that we've applied for every year for a long time. And it's $18,000 that will support the salaries of the director, the deputy director. This is a reimbursement, so we would apply for that $18,000 about a year from now.
So you just need to acknowledge them and permission to go for those. So I would make the motion that we authorize the emergency management director to pursue those two grants, the EMPG grant and the HMEP grant.
Absolutely, I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very much.
Try not to be so much difficulty next time, okay? Okay. Was there anybody from Main Street here, it's not, is there? Oh, we're Veterans Office or Travelers Claim, so let's go ahead and do Rhonda, then Rhonda, why don't you come on up here?
Randy, got you.
I know, but you're still under, you're under business, you come on up, Randy will be later. He's with other people. Had Rhonda come back up, we talked, remember last time we talked about the workman's comp and how to work that out? And there was a dispute between whose account of how many hours should be figured and we authorized Nick to go ahead and start working on the policy, how that's going to be. But Rhonda had some questions and concern. Laura did not leave because we were going to go on this, she asked before the meeting, sorry, she didn't know you were coming, in fact. I just got an email from her, a message, I sent her a message asking her to bring your comp hours over so we could see, she didn't know that. She just let me know that she didn't see that, so, so I don't think she left because you were here for that, but, but what's?
I was under the impression we were going to do this in executive session, I didn't realize we were going to do it in open session.
Oh, we don't have to do that, that's what, that's what I told you in the message, we can do it in a, in an open session, so that's fine, or we can do it by executive, either way. So if you prefer from executive, we can do that.
It's up to you.
No, it's really up to you, I don't want to put you on the spot, so if you'd rather come back on another time when it's just the.
Actually, I'd rather go ahead and get it resolved. We're disputing 33 hours of comp time that I have accrued through 2019 and 2020. As you know, I was terminated on June 18. I had given a two-week notice, but instead I was, my employment was terminated. So I'm here in a good faith effort to try to resolve the dispute of the 33 hours of comp time. In addition, under the Indiana Department of Labor, it indicates that if you are terminated from employment, you are due the remaining balance of your vacation accruals. I was paid, as you know, for the handbook, 42 hours of vacation upon my termination. Unfortunately, I had a remaining 33 hours of vacation that I lost. I lost 57 and a half hours of sick time, and again, the auditor is denying me my 33 hours of comp time. That's why I'm here, is to appeal to you to try to confer to.
We talked about some of those, let's talk about what we heard from some of those things and then, and really, if you'd rather do this in executive, that is fine with me.
And I don't want to argue.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
I don't want to be confrontational at all, and I came here in a good faith, faith effort to resolve it.
There were a couple of errors, I think, the way we discussed it last time when you weren't here. And one was, I think you need to have, and this is just me, but from what I understand, that if you're going to come in on outside of hours, that you have to have the approval of the supervisor to do that.
And if you.
Unless, unless that was a free standing order from her.
No, anytime we accrued any comp time, it was approved by our supervisor. And anytime we used it, it was approved by our supervisor. And the last time I used comp time was in May. And every two weeks when we turned in our attendance, I also turned in my approval sheet or usage sheet, it was a drag sheet, to show what my balance was on comp time. It was never disputed in the 18 months of my employment, it was only disputed after I was terminated. So that's why I'm here.
Okay, and I appreciate it, and you can, I, I know, I know you can appreciate the position we're in because we went there. We don't know who said what or who when, and I don't know how it works. Had you resigned before she terminated you?
I had put in a two-week notice, as you know.
And I don't know how that works, because if you quit, you don't get the, you don't get that.
That's correct, and your vacation language in the handbook is specific. If I self-terminate, we are only paid out six hour or six days of vacation.
That'd be a question, pause for Nick or for a?
I wasn't allowed to work my two-week notice, I was terminated. So we fall under Indiana Department of Labor rules then.
Okay, Nick, you know how that works?
I'll have to review it, I wasn't aware that I was going to come up today.
I know, and I didn't, she just, just asked, and I can show you the, the text message back and forth, but, but she had asked if we were going to do executive, and I was fine with that, but we could do it, I said in the open if you wanted to do that, but, but I don't, I don't.
I'm with the gym, like I said, I just came.
But I wish Laura was here so we can talk that, because while we're, the position we're stuck in is trying to decide what's right for it. And I would think there was a question on, if it's above 40 hours, then you can claim the comp hours a time and a half. But if it's vacation time, you can't claim them at double time, you only claim them at regular hours.
And I'm not disputing any of that.
Yeah, I understand, but I think some of the hours were in that category, so let's figure that out and see what we got exactly.
So there's an approval sheet that gets submitted for comp time, do you have that?
I have a copy.
Super.
Can I see it?
Sure.
Because we're not, we're only talking 33 hours, so you're on, you know we're not here to try to save any money, not at all.
And as I said, when I told you that I'd be happy to come over here and talk to you about it.
I think the way our handbook is so convoluted anyway, yeah, it's so, so convoluted, we just need to fix this, move on. We need to get this down to black and white, so everybody understands what's where.
So I mean, I mean, if there's approval for the comp time, then obviously we have to pay out the comp.
Yes, yes.
This is the last time I used comp time, this is what was turned in. And if you'll notice on the back, there's an attachment of the drag sheet, that's for 2020. I also have my 2019 drag sheet. I carried over 64 hours, absolutely.
And I don't even know how many hours we are, we are in conflict over, I don't, I don't know.
Does this machine ever hear worth, Jim?
Can't tell you, I don't know. Do you need your secretary?
I don't have to do things.
Okay, well, we'll see how it goes.
We'll see if the governmental technology.
You mentioned the comp time, you're, you're questioning 33 hours comp time and also 33 vacation, though.
Yes.
So it happens to be the same amount.
Yes, sir, 33.2 on the vacation.
You were not paid 33 hours of vacation.
Correct.
You were paid part, but not.
Correct, 42 hours is what I was paid.
You also are thinking your 33 comp that you retired.
Take it up to head of his office, all the way down to the end, she'll have it for you.
They not being locked, because Chris is our.
Oh, they gone, ah.
That you're looking for.
Yes, sir.
Do you have another copy of that, he could just keep that copy?
I can go to the front office and make a copy, like.
I think it's all locked up, I think.
Oh, yeah. Well, let me just make a copy for him and send it over to my.
Yeah, and we'll figure, we'll figure that out. And, and I know that you're, I know you're conflicted with Laura, and I know you know that we're not out to take a dollar away from you, so whatever to do, we're, we're, we just got to figure out what it is. So let's work on that, and.
I know when I looked at that worksheet, there were some of those hours that my understanding was she didn't approve. But if you've turned in sheets where she approved, I.
There can be no questions, you're sure that she approved it, but that's not what our understanding was.
Just to add to.
Do you agree with me?
I just want to add too, that when we request time off, I only received one back in the 18 months that I worked for the county. This is the one I received back.
Is that the last one?
That's the last one.
Well, it'll be pretty simple to me, you've got a list of what, what was approved and signed off on, and it's pretty black and white, that ought to, ought to be there, so we can get that taken care of.
Do you just want to bring everything by my office, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Then Nick will look at it, whatever's right, and we'll just take care of that and get the, get the check off the right here, take care of. Oh, I'm sorry, I came out, I'm sorry to see you go, I hate to, I always hate the conflict, there's been a lot of conflict in that office, I understand that. And I just hate, hate that conflict period, I'm not a, not a conflict person.
Your approval sheets would be what I'm hoping for, I didn't.
Not a problem, I'd be happy to make you a copy of it, Nick.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, see ya.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Okay, did Main Street present a list of events to you guys for us to approve?
Yeah.
Oh, you got it, okay, do I have it, maybe I have it.
Shouldn't have that.
Say it should be, but.
I hadn't, we've passed a travelers' claim. Yeah, I don't, I don't, hmm, but that doesn't mean it's not here somewhere. Okay. Yeah, I didn't see one like that anywhere in there. You have any question, any of those dates are in there?
No, I, as we know, there were a couple of things that were canceled earlier in the year because of COVID. They rescheduled for other dates, so I think we really had approved all of these activities, they were just on different dates.
Right.
I don't have any problem with the same activities occurring just on later dates.
Be the same day, just different date on the, in 2021 then.
Yeah, and so with that, I, I would make a motion that we just.
All right, let me take that back, I guess this is still for 20.
Yeah, this is still 2020.
Till 2020, yeah, it's just one's coming up, yeah, okay.
We allow a Main Street Rockville to.
I found that.
Use the courthouse lawn on the dates that they've mentioned through the rest of the year, the various events that they have.
Okay, and is that your motion? Was that a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We had the Veterans Office report there, Travelers' Claim, Nick, you know what that is?
You had a couple, one was in regards to two police vehicles that collided in a parking lot, it sounds like one had backed into the other. And the other one was in regards to something flying off a vehicle.
Okay. We also, as I imagine most of you were, we have a deputy that had a medical issue last night. He and his family were coming home from the theater and he had a, they believe a cardiac event, but he's got fluid in his lungs as well, his lungs weren't working, his heart wasn't working, they got a pulse back, he began to try to breathe on his own. Well, I understand he's down to hospital now, having difficult times, so they're going to have a prayer thing, so you wanted to do a motion to approve that?
Yeah, I talked to Justin about an hour before the meeting, he had just got word that they were going to do it, but I told him we probably need to approve them being off the courthouse. We're just in case something did happen.
Just for insurance, yeah.
Insurance purposes, so I make a motion that we allow the courthouse lawn to be used tonight for a prayer vigil for the sheriff's deputy that is in the hospital right now.
And I would second that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. I don't think, you have any old business?
I, I got something.
Okay, what you got?
We've talked previously about the jail and attorneys being able to visit their clients in the jail. I met today with the jail manager, I don't think it's title run, but Ed at the jail, and also met with the judge at the jail. We came up with a game plan on how to make it so that they can meet their clients better. We have three phones where they can talk that aren't recorded now. We also have it where we, and I guess this has saved the county money significantly on what we proposed previously, where they can zoom in if we have two laptops or two iPads or Surface Pros is what Randy had recommended. Where they can zoom in and talk to their clients. Where, what we proposed to do is have it set up where the Surface Pros are on the other side of the glass from the client, and there'd be a speaker that Bluetooths to the Surface Pros so they can hear their attorney, but they can't actually get a hold of the laptop.
I got you, okay.
And instead of having to do a separate server and all kinds of classes things, this, the only cost we'd have here would be for the hardware. So I guess what I'd like is approval to have Randy order two Bluetooth speakers, two Surface Pros and two, two headsets to go with the speakers where they can talk confidentially without people being able to hear what the attorney says.
You got a number there?
So the Surface Pros we previously stated were 800 apiece. I, I don't have a quote on the Bluetooth speakers or the headsets, but I, I want to get a quote from Randy, I guess is what I'm looking for.
Okay.
I haven't got to talk to Randy since I met with Ed at the jail today.
You just want approval from us to proceed, or you wouldn't, for approval, you're going to make those purchases, what do you want to do?
The biggest cost is going to be those Surface Pros. The Bluetooth speaker, I don't imagine being more than maybe $100, same with the headsets.
Did we talk about this coming out of the.
CARES Act.
Covid.
Right. So it would just be, we may have to fund it, but we can secretly just. So I guess what I view is approval to proceed on $1,500 or less worth of technology I ask for the jail. But with the understanding that we're going to apply for CARES Act reimbursement.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, that's what they're doing to begin with.
This would be no reoccurring cost to the county.
Right.
And if CARES Act approves it, it would be no cost whatsoever to the county.
Right.
Our worst day would be CARES Act doesn't approve it and the county will pay the.
$1,500, yeah, yeah.
But it'd be a permanent fix to this problem of the virus and limit the traffic.
Will you actually take this out of Chester's budget or our budget distribution, which we're.
Have to figure that out. That's probably more of a council, council concern with the.
It'd be significantly less than that server, we talked about this, $4,000 plus a yearly cost, this would be a one-time cost.
It's one of those situations where we can approve a purchase and then figure out how to pay for it. Yeah, council. Well, I think it's a good idea, I'll make that motion that we approve the request for the no-contact communication system for the, for the jail and attorneys.
I'll second it.
I suppose I should put up to, up to $2,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that'd be a good, good thing.
Wouldn't that be a permanent solve the visitation problem and stop drugs?
I don't think Zoom, there's even any charge, I don't think, for Zoom, I think it's a free service.
It is.
And if it's not, then Microsoft has one, they all have those meeting room things you can do.
Well, I credit the, was it jail manager, what's his title there at the jail? I'm not sure what his title is.
Yeah, I don't either.
And this was his idea, and I think it's the cost-effective deal.
Yeah, you're talking about Ed Roach, yeah.
Yeah.
Good, you did, you did good, then, okay, anything else?
Oh, this is something that's been brought to my attention too, that there's, the county currently owns that property out in LAV, Leon Bryant. One of the neighbors is selling his property, but he's running advertisements on the internet indicating with pictures that, of the property. indicating with pictures that, of the property owned by the county. There's been some issues as far as coming and going from there, as far as people changing the locks and things like that. I believe two of the landowners are joining each other, maybe a farmer and a landowner had some conflict. What I was wanting to do is just make the commissioners aware that that's being going on, that the appearance on the website would be that he's actively selling the county's property versus his property. There's also property of his that are going out there. We, as you know, we've been doing site visits out there, phase one, two, right?
As best as remember.
Right, as best as remember, but there's indications that he's been using the property for things such as writing ATVs and UTVs and things like that.
Nothing like being a good neighbor.
So I'd either like to send him a letter, just a cease and desist letter, or maybe contact him if I can and just indicate that he doesn't have the approval to use the property because I don't think he's ever been given that.
No, he hasn't.
All right, so I just wanted to make officials aware and then I'll probably send the letter for record purposes.
You need anything from us to do that?
Just your approval for me to do that.
Okay.
I don't have to, I don't want to do that.
Let's do that in a minute, and I'd make a motion that we authorize our attorney to send the letter to Mr. Wang to be aware that he does not have permission to be on our property or even displaying it as a possibility for sale.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I would just state that there's no risk of him being able to claim the property. Adverse possession is something that a lot of people think they can do with property. But as a governmental entity, you can't under laws, you can adversely possess it.
Good.
But it's still, for a liability standpoint, we don't want him using the property.
Sure, sure. Okay, good job. I have no old business, so Julie is not here. Justin, as we indicated, won't be here today, so Chris has already been here, so Randy, it's up to you. While Randy's coming up, I, we had a call from some people living on Mill Road. That's the road that's being used as the unofficial detour since, say, Road fifty-nine has cut shutdowns. And I drove it four times the other day and really it's not, road wise, it's not bad. It's watch ward, can't go very fast, but complaint from the people who live there, people are driving too fast anyway, so we don't really want to create that, make it any easier to drive faster on because of the dust control. I stopped and talked with them when I was out the other day too, whatever day that was, Saturday, it was Saturday, I think, and explained that that road really is fine and there's one section that's not, so Randy aware of too, I'm sure, but that hillside, that hill, Randy, coming down from the, from the Vanstone quarry up there, that.
Mansfield?
Yeah, Mansfield, that road going down, that needs a material loan to work on, but I know you're aware of that already. That's the only spot really on that road that needed anything at the moment. Their, their concern also was they had paid for the dust control in the front of their house and there's a couple holes on whatever end that is, south, I guess it would be, and he was concerned about there being more traffic than they had anticipated. Well, I'm not sure that's our responsibility that we didn't close fifty-nine, so as I explained, it's a public road. People get to use the roads whether you like that or not.
Is it an official detour? Is that what you said?
No.
It's not even on the.
Yeah, it's just the one they're using. They're using that and they're using Martin. Martin Road's blacktop. He would prefer they would use that one, but we can't tell people they can't use a road, but Martin Road's pretty beaten up. It's customized, but Randy said they were going out today, starting some of those, so that, maybe that will take some of the traffic off their lane too.
Mill Road.
Yeah, off of Mill Road. They were, they were upset and I understand, they, he got a little out of hand, but I think we're back to where it's okay. So if it's okay with you, Bruce, I asked Randy if we could put some of those temporary thirty mile an hour speed limit signs on Mill Road just to try to get him to knock that down. We won't do it in ordinance four, it won't be permanent, but if they want a permanent or if Randy wants a permanent, we can do that at some point, but for right now, we can stick some in the ground. He just has to have them okayed by whatever it's called. Now, not Holy Moly anymore, but whoever has, has to come out and do that. What do they call them still now?
Holy Moly.
You still call it Holy Moly?
That's what I still.
Some other, some other name for them. I don't know who they are, but.
And you had a one call, I think.
I think you're right. I think you have one call, yeah, that's it.
Holy Moly's easier, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so if we can get those in the next couple of days, I think they would be okay with that. And it is a tough situation. We have, still have people on thousands who are out yelling at cars going down the road because they're going too fast and folks are public roads and they're below the speed limits and I know it makes more sense, but it's not your road. You just happen to live there and I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but we didn't close forty-one, we didn't close fifty-nine, we didn't close those things, so it wasn't us who did that. So anyway, that's where we are with that and I think that's all I got outside of, what you got? What do you got?
Well, I got proposals to paint covered bridges, the neat bridge, just the walls, the red part, the Talisman Bridge, same with that, both of those thirty-five hundred dollars and the Coors Bridge also with the walls, thirty-five hundred dollars. Big Rocky Fort Bridge, the walls red and the roof blue, thirty-five hundred for that one, and the State Sanatorium Bridge, walls white and the lettering on both ends.
Okay.
Forty-five hundred for the, for the bridge and then eleven hundred dollars for the letter.
Okay.
That makes a total of nineteen-six, I believe.
Okay. Did you get a quote by chance for the roof on the Sim Smith Bridge?
No, I don't think you'll do that, but I haven't got that.
Okay, the commission, the commission has authorized up to twelve thousand dollars to replace that roof. It's a wooden shingle roof and it's leaking, batters holes all through it, so it'll need to be replaced, so we're going to do a metal on that, but Rand's going to get a quote and then that won't come out accounted by Z B C B that'll pay for that. So what do you need from us? Need approval on those? Okay.
Is that an estimate there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we accept the estimate Randy's received to re-roof the covered bridges he mentioned in his report.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And also have a, I was thinking check, the wall by Smalley.
Yeah, we already approved that.
Four twenty-nine, nine fifty-eight, twenty-five.
She had it on her list there, so you just need to leave that with Tammy and then she can take care of it. Four hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Yes.
Okay, see, we're, we're way ahead of you. We're, we're taking care of you.
And then also the grinding, the bridge, three fifty north.
Okay. I've seen the state has been doing a lot of grinding on the forty-one there, getting ready to chip seal. I wish we had a grinder like that, so some of our patches we could grind in them, but it's just money. What's a, what's a grinder adequate to do that cost? I know you've written a pass, what's it cost to buy one? Any idea?
I don't have any idea.
Okay.
That old machine we got back when we bought that, that's been years ago, was I think around sixty, sixty-five thousand.
Okay. It'd be nice to be able to grind those patch humps down where they're smooth again, but it's always money. It's just always money.
Yeah. And I have. Signs where you look at for the Jackson Bridge.
I looked at those distances today, so we'll have some choices here on the, on the distances. It is, I can take it in a minute. The big one. The first one you come to that's got the warning beside it, no trucks beyond this point, last turnaround opportunity before covered bridge, eleven foot clearance, turn around now, and the fine on the bottom of it. That one is just one mile from the covered bridge. That is at Road one fifty, which is the last turnaround opportunity for a semi. There's no place else between there and the covered bridge that you can turn a Samurai around in. This is your last chance and that's what it says, last turnaround opportunity. So you have, see anything on there you'd like to change or correct? Now's the time.
I don't think we can find them up to twenty-five thousand.
No.
So if you're, I mean, as long as the understanding is that's just a blink.
That's just, that's, that's it. I contacted your office, did she ask you?
She did, I told her I was going to call you and now I forgot to call.
I didn't think there's nothing illegal about putting that misinformation on the sign.
As long as you understand we can't enforce it.
Right. Twenty-five hundred, I think, is what the limit.
Twenty-five hundred for the first occurrence, seventy-five hundred for every occurrence after that.
Okay.
So if you get repeat by laters.
Oh, okay.
You can.
Surprising to me, we could put a fine on a, on a bridge of twenty-five hundred dollars. That's most the state will allow us even for historic structures.
Yeah.
I don't, I just didn't think that'd give us attention too much, but maybe we need to go with a real twenty-five hundred. I, I put on her twenty-five thousand dollar fine even though we know it's not accurate, but they wouldn't know it wasn't accurate.
We could sue them civilly though, but that's really the insurance provider probably going to look at that for us as far as filing for restitution or things like that.
So what do you think? Should we stay at twenty-five hundred, the real fine?
I would probably indicate the real fine, but then, I mean, the county has the capacity to be able to sue them civilly for the loss.
But we could do the twenty-five hundred.
Yeah.
So should we change that? This is just a draft, right? We have, we have time to change it? I wonder if.
We have time to change it.
I wonder, I like the, the warning being red and the last turnaround opportunity. Should that have been a different color too? Do you think they would see that more if that was a different color? If that was red also, warning, last turnaround opportunity, then the black would explain what they mean by that? I'm afraid that all kind of blends into one, there's going to.
Turn around now.
Yeah.
This way.
Yeah.
I would, you know, maybe put in, in addition to civil penalties or something like that, in addition to civil, I don't know how to best word that, because we can find them twenty-five hundred dollars, but we could also sue them civilly for the loss to the bridge, potentially.
So should we put twenty-five hundred dollar fine plus civil liabilities or damages or?
Yeah, however you want to best word that, but that's what we're looking for, civil damages or.
Well, you would know better than I how it ought to be worded, I think. We just want to make sure that the truck drivers understand and they've been told before you ever went there that you were warned, this is.
But we also got limited space.
Yes, we do.
I think the more important issue is the warning.
Yeah.
As opposed to the penalty.
I agree.
So what I, all I'm saying is I don't want to take away or make the warning part smaller to fit.
Right. Oh, me either. Oh, no.
So if we could just say something real small, that says twenty-five hundred dollar fine plus.
And you could put that.
Civil damages or whatever, that's fine.
Plus, I'd just say twenty-five hundred dime, five, twenty-five hundred dollar fine plus damages is what I would probably say.
And that's fine with me. And that's why we got them, because these are just drafts, we can change anything and the lettering doesn't have to be that big. It could even be smaller if you think the other part would stand out more, but I think the turnaround now is really significant.
We leave out the covered bridge.
Yeah.
For damages.
Yeah. Somebody, I don't remember who it was that recommended, just put in the picture of it so they knew what we were talking about, but it says covered bridge, but I will.
I'd just put twenty-five hundred dollar fine plus damages is probably what I'd put.
Okay.
Do you know if anything's been, I know that a lot of these ones, we haven't been able to determine who did it, but the ones that we have, it was claims submitted to their insurance.
Anybody's been caught, they've been paid for by the company.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd just say in addition to damages or something like that.
I wouldn't be opposed to taking the covered bridge off the top and put a warning all the way across the top in really big letters and then put the covered bridge where the warning sign is now, right before that, where it says no trucks beyond this point. Just have a covered bridge on there someplace. What do you think about that?
The covered bridge at the point, if you don't read it, they're going to see there's a covered bridge there.
Yeah. I wouldn't mind that warning being up, that line bigger.
Cover bridge out, put the warning by itself at the top.
Yeah.
And then no trucks beyond this point would be the second line.
Bet you can put the covered bridge on the second line too, where it says no trucks beyond this point, you can put the covered bridge where the warning sign is now, but the top line, instead of the bridge being there, would just be a warning all the way across in red letters.
Yeah, I think there's something to the picture of the bridge.
I do too.
There might be some people.
I think it was Jamie that suggested, somebody suggested that anybody should put a picture, they still know what you're talking about anyway.
To basically just.
Swap places between the warning.
Cover bridge and the warning.
And make those, make that red warning sign off the top as big as we can make it, spread out as we make it.
Put the covered bridge down.
Put the covered bridge down, right where it says no trucks beyond this point.
And change the bottom line to.
Twenty-five hundred dollar plus damages?
Plus damages.
You okay with that, Randy?
So you're going to move the bridge down to where the warning's at now?
Yeah, and put that whole top line in big, big letters, big red warning.
Just warning up here.
Just warning, all the way across.
Okay, then twenty-five hundred dollar fine?
Yeah, take, take that. Nick thinks we've got to be honest. It's against my nature of being a politician, to be honest.
You know, everybody would think that about me also with my career.
Yeah, yeah. So twenty-five hundred dollar fine plus damages.
I'm just looking at it from an enforcement standpoint, I'd rather me to have a fine simply.
Sure, it's fine.
They just need to do what it's a four and put plus with an S on the damage.
Yeah.
So twenty-five hundred dollar fine plus damage, plus damages to covered bridge, yeah. Yep. You guys okay with that?
The other signs, I.
Now, we talked about lighting this one at the end. We could get those flashing red lights around the perimeter, like I see a stoplights. I have seen some that have a yellow flashing light at, just at the top, and it's just solar a yellow flashing light at, just at the top, and it's just solar powered battery that they've got a yellow flashing light.
I think that's gonna call people to steal them.
Trash it. Yeah. I don't see, I don't see it being untouched very long anyway. Let's try it this way for a while, and if we have to light it, we can, but surely to God they can see that. I don't think we get too much of them at night, nighttime driving up there anyway, but I don't know if we do or not. I mean, I mean, big trucks, the delivery trucks and stuff that we fight, they're probably not at the start, but winter time they could be.
High intensity.
Yeah.
So you're gonna be able to see them.
And if.
Until your lights hit.
They're three feet by five feet. It's high reflectivity. This next one's, we're gonna go right out of, out of Annapolis, right, so you're coming down the bottom of the hill there. There's Crawford Street there. There'd be one there, and that one is.
Also got one for Broadway Street.
Oh, you have one for Broadway Street? Okay.
Broadway, Crawford Street, Roaring Creek.
Roaring Creek.
And one fifty.
Okay, Roaring Creek.
From north end, we're starting to Savannah and coming down to where Beadle Road makes the turn. We're gonna put it back just north of that, just a little ways, where they make the turn. And there's gonna be another one where Beadle turns and goes south again. And then there's gonna be one down there, right, right to south edge of Jackson Road.
Okay.
That's across over that road.
Okay. Okay. There's, that's not a real concern. I mean, it's a concern to get it stopped, but there's plenty of room to turn around there. You got Jackson Road turning around on there, so that's not a problem. Yeah. So that's not a problem.
Cause there's no sign just like this person.
Okay. And you know what all, all the mileage is are then that you need? Okay.
Not anymore, no, one point five.
Okay, I didn't know. I saw these choices. Yeah, one point six is the one from, that's Roaring Creek. And one point nine would be from Crawford Street. And one point eight, yeah, and one point eight is close enough. So, okay. Or two point eight, I guess it is.
Yeah, one point five is a Broadway, one point six is a Crawford.
Okay.
It should be in order. And we start in the north and come south.
Okay. You okay with the other ones then? Just the ones leading up to the big warning sign? Rest of them are okay to you? Just simply says covered bridge three miles ahead, eleven foot zero inch clearance, no turnaround available on the bridge. You can't get more plain than that.
I really wish we could find them more than a twenty, but.
Yeah.
The other, and I would give you, one of the signs can be put up.
Gonna have a stop sign on the, on the side of it saying stop, no trucks beyond this point.
Two closest to the bridge.
And then the inside, poster would have the weight limit on it.
All of them will have a weight limit.
Yeah.
I might even eliminate one post for a sign.
Okay. And they'll all be two posters, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, all signs, two, two posters. Good. Okay. So any questions on those? You ready to approve those?
I don't know. I think they look good. I think I appreciate Jim. I know you did a lot of the work on it, but Randy getting these ready, so I make a motion to go ahead and allow Randy to get these signs ordered and let's get them up.
And I would second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just make, I just make Randy's day when he sees me pull in the driveway in the morning at seven o'clock. I'm thirty-fourty-five, seeing him pull in, pull in there.
Possible should be around seventeen sixty-two.
Okay. What else you got?
Um, I think, uh, we'll start chicken ceiling this week. It looks like it'll rain about every day. So hopefully get started first next week.
Great.
Maybe we get that done, it'll be cooled off a little bit and, hey, we'll be more comfortable.
We had a, a road in question that we talked about, and we approved the, the ones to, to seek the grants on for community crossings. And then of course, there's, there's always some that are just right there. And so there was a question between Deer Run or Jeffries Ford. Jeffries Ford's significant also. It's right there by Jack Seo's place. I talked to him, in fact, the other day about it as well. So I talked to Randy about that. He thinks that we can probably own Jeffries, because we went with Deer Run. We can either wedge next summer, worse spots, certainly patch what we have now, and then hopefully then next time we can get, get there as well. The ones that we've been able to do, I mean, they're just great. Royal Bash Valley is just doing great. If you've got a chance to drive out of Judson to go out either fifty-nine or forty-seven either way, there's just a, it's just a great, great road. I wish we could afford to do all, but let's take about, well, let's see, we got ten miles down, thirty-five, only about thirty-five million would be, we could probably do them all. So that's not, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Sign her up. Write the check. Okay. Nothing else?
No.
Okay. Anybody got anything? Yep?
I do. I know you know Gordon Mannion?
Yes.
Okay, Gordon, Gordon built, owns property across from his place, and he's building a little park for his grandkids and stuff. And that Diamond Road down through there, actually three seventy-five east, there's no signs and, and there's a lot of people coming from the town out toward Bridston and taking that road, and they think that's an interstate. There's, there's no posting for any speed signs down through there. He, he asked me to see if there's any chance of getting a couple of speed signs, one on each end, and maybe a children playing sign.
Yeah, no children playing.
But the, the speed signs, if you want some permanent change to the speed going through, they would have to start the new, the ordinance process. So you just need to apply to the highway department, buy an ordinance for that strip.
Is there some kind of application you have to have for that?
No.
Just call Janie and tell her what the, what the road is?
Do that. I'll take care of it.
You got it? Okay.
And, uh.
I'll get to the mileage.
Randy, Randy passed that spot I talked about last time, and it made a big difference.
Good. Tell Gordon that, Gordon's a good guy. Gordon's worked several things for me around with the rich theater, a lot about those public project kind of things. So tell him Randy's gonna take care of it. They're gonna start the ordinance process on it now and make it a permanent change.
But we don't do children playing.
Why? I didn't know if you do or not. I've, I've seen them in town. I haven't, I haven't seen the country.
Some places they will, but we, you know, this can be a problem, quite frankly, all over the county. We've got an ordinance that says the speed limit for county roads is X number of miles an hour, okay? But you go on any county road at any particular time, and everybody's complaining about their, go out to Nysville where I have a farm. You know where I'm at, Randy. They're hitting sixty miles an hour when they go down that stretch before they get to the Judson Turnoff, okay?
Yeah.
You take Bridston Road. You don't think, you think they go thirty, forty miles an hour down Bridston?
I was gonna say, even on that thirty mile strip there, right out of town, that's thirty mile, not even close. And, and the double let's.
The problem is, we can't put signs everywhere that says thirty miles an hour. I mean.
They're, they aren't gonna pay attention to them anyway.
With the sheriff department. They can't, never. So, you know, I understand what Gordon's concern is totally. I like heaven. Down there.
Thirty in years, yeah.
Oh, yeah. But down there on Bridston Road, somebody painted on the road once. I don't know if you saw it, Slow Down, right there by Jones's house, right there where you kind of come up that little Slow Down.
We got a lady down the bottom.
Painted it on the, on the, on the road. It's just.
Lady down the bottom of the hill on one thousand, she gets out, yells at people coming by. She stands in the road and she yell that she went too fast.
Look, the problem is even if we post the road, with the amount of roads we have in the county, there's just.
You can't.
The likelihood of an officer catching them doing this.
Yes. That's what I tell folks.
But I'm just saying Randy could be posting signs everywhere, because we all want people to slow down. It's just, how do you get them to slow down?
But that's thirty, that's thirty miles.
Impossible.
That sign isn't gonna make those people slow down.
Yeah, those signs are not gonna slow them down.
No, no.
But if an officer did happen to come across.
See, she got some, got some teeth. Finally got some teeth in it, so you do that. Yeah, I agree. So we'll start that process. We'll let Gordon know we'll start that process.
Okay, now, I, I close that. I know you've been to Diamond Lot. There's a lot of four ways. It seems like they come off Bridston Road, I own the place there, Bridston West. Soon as they make that curve, they shoot up that hill, there's, there's no stop signs at four ways. There's only three stop signs in the whole town.
This on the county road? There's no stop signs?
No, this, this is in Bridston.
Well, we still have response for those in Bridston, because they're not incorporated. So we need to see where those are, because if we have to have signs, we're completely liable on those if we don't have stop signs in the intersection.
There's, there's no signs. There's like one, two, like there's, there's like three roads that really need to look at.
Well, we'll have to look at that, because that, we have to have those for liability